Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please start up with the roll call.
Okay, Council President McGurven. Okay, I didn't hear him, but I see him. Uh, Councilmember Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Alberston.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
And Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we're gonna start tonight's meeting off with the public hearing on health through housing. And joining us is Clark Close. The lead.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, uh, members of the council. Uh, let me go ahead and share my screen here. It's gonna take just a second to load. Uh, let me know if you see that and if you're just seeing the, the original presentation.
Yes, it looks correct.
Okay. All right. Uh, so, um, by way of introduction, uh, Clark Close, Senior Planner with the current Planning Division. Uh, my contact information, uh, I can be reached at 425-430-7289, or via email at cclose@rentonlaw.gov. Uh, so before you tonight, uh, have a presentation for health through housing, and this is the public hearing for LUA 21-000389. Uh, the land use application includes a form of development agreement and nine exhibits uh, between the city of Renton and King County for permanent supportive housing site on Oakdale. And, uh, the PowerPoint presentation includes 10 slides. Uh, so this is the first one, and we'll go ahead and move on here. Uh, so the presentation overview includes project requests and location, background summary, development agreement, uh, run-through rent municipal code analysis as part of, of this proposal, and then provide staff recommendation at the end. So King County Department of Community and Human Services, uh, otherwise known as DCHS, is requesting a development agreement and a change of use to convert the former Extended Stay America Hotel to permanent supportive housing with onsite services for the chronically homeless located at 1150 Oakdale Avenue Southwest. Uh, the application, uh, for the development agreement was submitted on October 8th of last year, and it was determined complete on November 8th of 2021. The CIPA environmental review, uh, was completed for the permanent supportive housing development project, uh, with the King County acting as the CIPA lead agency, and they issued a determination of non-significance or a DNS pursuant to WAC 197 11 342, and that occurred on October 12th of 2021, and no appeals were filed, uh, as part of that process. Uh, so, jumping into the site here, you can see, uh, an aerial image of, of the, uh, project site. It's a 3.9 acre site. It's located in the Valley Community Planning Area. Uh, site is accessed via Oakdale Avenue Southwest. Uh, that's the primary access, rather. Um, the site was originally developed for a 110-room Extended Stay Hotel. It was built around 1998, and it includes a three-story building. Uh, you can kinda see it there in the reverse L shape, uh, with approximate size of 68,000 square feet total. Uh, each room offers a bed or beds, kitchenette, a bathroom, uh, and each room is approximately 318 to 470 square feet in size. The county is proposing to convert the Extended Stay Hotel to approximately 106 affordable housing units, and they're also proposing to retain 117 surface parking spaces, uh, in the process. The project would include some minor site plan and building improvements, such as exterior outdoor amenities for residents, a new fencing, a large refuse and recycling area, and equipping each studio room with a refrigerator, oven, uh, a range, and a microwave, essentially a kitchen. Uh, as far as background goes, the county was, uh, purchased the property in 2021, and then the Washington State Legislature has the authority, uh, uh, has, has given the authority, rather, the execution of development agreements between local governments, uh, and those that have ownership or controlled ownership of property. So, uh, this is available via RCW 3670B, and then the sections are 170 through 210. Uh, so in this particular case, uh, that partnership would be with King County DCHS. Uh, the proposal would include 24-hour staffing, uh, code of conduct for the residents, active individualized case management, uh, wraparound services, availability for residents, and then they would also propose to adhere to a good neighbor plan that would include addressing litter, noise, and security procedures. And so in the left there, you can see a copy of the security plan. Uh, the county intends to select one or more third-party operators, uh, such as Catholic Community Services to operate the site as permanent supportive housing. Uh, and in the future, the county anticipates that they would likely transfer ownership uh, of the property to that third party. Uh, the permanent supportive housing site would be operated in compliance, uh, with several plans, and these plans, uh, are included as exhibits, uh, to the prepared development agreement that's available online. Uh, and that would include onsite, uh, security plan, a transportation plan for residents to obtain adequate services, onsite, uh, support services plan appropriate to the needs of the residents, including case management, uh, behavioral and physical healthcare, employment preparation and counseling, housing services, and other support to improve health, uh, financial resources, housing stability, and community connection. Uh, in addition, King County will provide, uh, common recreation space plan with the existing, uh, rooms on the first floor, uh, that will be converted to common, uh, space for exercise. There'd be a guest room laundry. In addition, there would be outdoor recreation space for outdoor gathering, uh, with picnic tables, uh, bike lockers, and a smoking shelter, as well as a fire life safety plan uh, that has been, uh, currently looked at and reviewed by the Rent Regional Fire Authority. Uh, use of the property for permanent supportive housing would be affordable housing, uh, as the term is used under RCW 3670A 0302. Uh, the proposed permanent supportive housing development would require building and/or construction permits, uh, create additional demand or need for transportation and park system improvements, and then school facilities would be provided, uh, by Rent Regional, or rather Renton School District, and then the school district would provide transportation for eligible students that are living, living in the permanent supportive housing, uh, development project, um, on an as-needed basis, and then also, uh, fire protection would be provided by Rent Regional Fire Authority. And as part of any future development permits associated with the conversion and change of use, uh, uh, applicable, uh, current, uh, fees would apply there. Um, and then also, let me go to my next page here. Uh, we did receive some public comment as part of the land use notice regarding, uh, safety concerns. Uh, the applicant, uh, is proposing a security plan, uh, in association with that. They, they did ask that question, and then specifically, they asked if there was anything in place designed to prevent property destruction and theft, as well as protection and safety of neighboring tenants, or if there's, uh, if there's a spike in crime, uh, related to the projects, what steps will be taken to solve it? Uh, according to the county, collectively, the, the provided plans and operational conditions are anticipated to provide a safe, uh, decent, uh, welcoming and appropriate living environment where daily needs can be met, uh, by the tenants, including the supportive services, people in, uh, experiencing chronic homelessness, a need to achieve and maintain stability while ensuring compatibility with the project surroundings. In addition, I did receive some comments from the Renton Police Department, and they noted, uh, that they are committed to the safety and well-being of the residents and businesses and visitors in the city of Renton. And then, uh, of course, anytime there's a crime committed in the city of Renton, uh, they've indicated that you can, uh, call the Renton Police Department at 425-430-7500. Uh, uh, as part of the development agreement as well, the city, uh, would reserve the authority to impose new and different development regulations to the extent required by serious threat to public health and safety. Uh, so that was a little bit about, about the background there, and so moving forward with the development agreement, uh, it does set forth the development standards and the other provisions, uh, that would apply, govern, and best the development. Uh, use, the mitigation of the development of the property, uh, for the duration of the agreement. Uh, through the approval of the agreement, uh, council, uh, can issue land use approval uh, for this particular project. The, the project file, as I mentioned, is LUA 21-000389. And this would be for, again, permanent supportive housing as an alternative to the county applying, uh, for and/or, uh, obtaining conditional use permit and site plan review approval as part of the hearing examiner approval process. Uh, the project elements, they include permitted use, operations, and other development standards and requirements, uh, that would apply to the project. So once the development agreement and resolution, uh, are executed, uh, the property may be used and operated as permanent supportive housing. Uh, the site and building preparation period is expected, uh, to take three to six months. And the operation would follow, uh, the plans, uh, that previously were identified in Slide 6. Uh, they would, uh, be subject to applicable fees. Uh, they would comply with, uh, urban design regulations and follow other building and fire protection codes, uh, for future permits. Uh, in addition, the agreement, uh, establishes terms, uh, investing period, and general provisions. Uh, for example, the term here, uh, requires that the operator occupy the site as permanent supportive housing within four years of the effective date. Uh, and as part of the, um, CIPA environmental review process, King County concluded that there would be no significant adverse impacts associated with permanent supportive development project. Uh, there is availability and adequate public services and facilities to accommodate the proposed project, uh, provided that the development agreement, uh, is complied with. Uh, the proposal would be compliant with the employee area comprehensive plan objectives and policies by providing supportive housing needs for livi-, or living environment with proximity to transit service, uh, the zoning development standards of the commercial office zoning designation, uh, such as, uh, increasing the size of the refuse and recycling requirements, uh, would, would be complied with. The design district standards and guidance would be functional and usable as part of the, uh, design district D requirements. In addition, the project, uh, is consistent with critical areas, site plan review, uh, for example, by adding, uh, the minimum amount of bicycle parking for the residents as part of the conversion and change of use. Uh, and finally, the, uh, proposal is compliant with the conditional use criteria, including, uh, consistency with the plans and regulations. Uh, it is an appropriate location, uh, anticipate that it would not result in detrimental overcon-, overconcentration of permanent supportive housing within the city. Uh, as far as the effects of, on the adjacent property, it would be mitigated through several identified operations plans. Uh, the proposed use is compatible with the scale and character of the neighborhood. It does have adequate parking for the proposed use. Uh, it is not expected to generate any significant traffic. Catholic Community Services, uh, does access the King County, uh, Human Service, uh, bus ticket program, and they also sign their clients up for the free Ora cards. Uh, and the site is in close proximity, uh, to several bus routes and rapid, uh, transit lines. Uh, the proposed change of use is not anticipated to have any negative, uh, impacts on noise, light, and glare as construction, uh, would be minor, and the county is proposing to follow, uh, written construction hours. And existing, uh, lighting is also proposed, uh, to be retained for security purposes. Uh, no removal of site vegetation, uh, is being proposed as, as part of the application. Uh, and, um, the proposed development is consistent with applicable development regulations uh, under the Rent Municipal Code, uh, provided the development agreement is complied with. Uh, so therefore, staff is recommending approval of the health through housing development agreement and change of use, uh, this would be LUA 21-000389, uh, for permanent supportive housing development project with onsite services for the chronically homelessness on Oakdale. Uh, next steps, uh, would include, uh, preparing a resolution uh, regarding this matter to be presented for, uh, reading and adoption at a regular, uh, council meeting on January 24th, uh, 2022. Uh, and that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council this time? They're all answered earlier. Okay, I know we do not have any correspondence, but this is a public hearing, so, um, is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment? So please raise your hand. Looks like we have one hand raised.
Okay. Diane, please go ahead.
Thank you. Diane Dobson from the, um, Chamber of Commerce hadn't planned on testifying tonight, but hearing the, the matter, I would be remiss if I did not speak up, um, recognize the zoning process, the amount of time and effort that the staff has put into this, and I'm very appreciative of the, the thoughtful consideration. Um, what I want to bring up and really put emphasis on is that good neighbor policy. And I know in the committee of the whole meeting, Councilmember Alberston asked about what that good neighbor policy looked like, and from what we have just previously experienced at the Red Lion, the good neighbor policy was as impactful and effective as the paper that it was written on, and that was the extent of it. I am gonna bring forward to the city that it is crucial, critical for the success of this program, that you incorporate and involve the neighbors surrounding the property. This can't be something, uh, neighbors have already reached out. Um, Embry-Riddle has reached out and offered classroom approach. They've offered, um, to be those welcoming, friendly face of neighbors. They have asked for no big fences with the, um, that appears to fence people off from the, um, the rest of the world, where you see the, um, fences at the Red Lion with the screens preventing anyone from seeing in or out. Now, that's not the safety fence in the back. I can't speak to that request. It's just that visual barrier that Embry-Riddle doesn't find as welcoming or inviting. My point being is, those conversations are what we miss when the county placed the Red Lion facility without preemptive conversation, without listening to the neighbors as to what was important to them, without, um, without hearing their fears and concerns, and coming to the table with solutions and approach, um, in working together. And in talking, uh, we had regular meetings at the, the chamber with the representatives from DESC and the, the staff and service providers there, and they too were remiss at the speed that everything happened, and those preliminary conversations were not happening and did not happen. So I cannot emphasize and reemphasize enough to, um, the council, to the staff, the importance of those conversations for this to be successful, not just for the businesses and the community that's around the location, but for those guests that we will be looking to reintegrate as part of our community as well, for tho-, their most successful transition process too. Thank you for hearing my unscripted, um, comments.
All right, thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak on this topic?
I don't see any more hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Seeing none, what's the wish of the council?
I move to close the public comment, the public hearing.
Okay, it's been moved by, uh, Councilmember Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the public comment, uh, period be closed. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have the audi-, no, we have administrative report.
Evening, everyone. City Hall is open for in-person services at our finance and police counters Monday through Wednesday, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Our municipal court counter is open Thursday and Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., while hearings are conducted via Zoom. Our staff continues to provide and improve virtual and online customer services, such as our virtual permit counter and our recreation programming reservation process. Space is limited in each facility, and masks are required when inside a city facility as we follow guidance that protects both you and our employees. For more information, please visit our website. In response to the recent inclement weather, a cold weather shelter was activated in the Renton Highlands. The shelter opened December 26th and operated on a 24/7 schedule through January 2nd. The shelter served between 6 and 29 people while open. Starting January 10th, 2022, King County Metro Via to Transit has expanded their service hours and designated hubs, pickup and drop-off locations in the Renton Highlands. The new service hours are Monday through Saturday, 5:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. The updated designated hubs are Renton Transit Center, Kaiser Permanente Renton, Bartel's QFC, Renton Highlands Library, Renton Technical College, The Landing, Heaton High School, and the Safeway Starbucks Post Office area. Service can be requested through the Via Transit Go Ticket bar, credit, or debit card. The goal of Via Tran-, Via to Transit is to make getting to and from transit and around the community easier and more accessible. Via to Transit is available for trips, is defined service areas only. One end of each trip must be a designated hub and service area. In addition, King County Metro Via to Transit Point-to-Point is a pilot on-demand service that access eligible customers can choose to make trips anywhere within Southeast Seattle and Tuck Willa during service hours. Service hours are Monday through Saturday, 5:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Rights must start and end within the service area. Need help or have questions, please call 206-553-3000, or Washington Relay 711. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. While projects or weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That is the report.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll open up the audience comment period. It remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by a city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker of, you've been unmuted. This is the speaker's queue that's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you're addressing. Speaker should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish your comments when you see the time is close to expiring. I believe we have one person signed up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one person, and that is Diane Dobson. Diane, go ahead.
Thanks so much. I'm again Diane Dobson, CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce. I'm back again because since the last meeting, I haven't heard from you guys, and it's reported that neither of my businesses. So I come to you again to explain something better to you. For the past two years, I've been one of the biggest champions the city has had. For those on council, you heard me repeatedly coming back to the council, giving administration public pacts on the back for their continued efforts, reminding them that we're all in this together, and they were doing a good job, and stay strong. Because I knew firsthand the tip of the iceberg of the chaos the city was facing in the middle of the pandemic, protests, fires, and floods. And as a supportive member of this community, I continued to come, week after week, with positivity and praise, especially while others in the community were tearing you all apart. So when I come before you at council and ask you to listen to me, it isn't because I'm an activist trying to take bites, cause disruption with no solution, or just agitate matters. It's because I've been walking the walk and in the trenches, and I'm trying to point out something for you to listen to, to look at, and to realize. And I'm asking you to fulfill the promises that many of you made in your campaign promises of supporting small businesses. You were asked by the representatives from the Renton Downtown Partnership and the Renton Chamber of Commerce to pause in your council's forward approach with the Pavilion Project, to evaluate if the plan and priorities are still contemporary as it relates to the businesses and community needs post-COVID, to explore if the city has taken opportunities to tackle those quick wins and short-term projects that could best support our existing businesses as they struggle to survive with COVID, with the impacts of the Red Lion facility, and with the impacts of that construction. Have Marklets been addressed? Have wayfinding signs for traffic been installed? Has the mirrored glass been removed, or facades repainted or restored? Has an RFP been put out on the Big Five lot, a lot that was identified by the focus group as a priority of construction and development? And to examine if this project is indeed the next best step, to meet with the businesses, and with the organizations that are representing the businesses, to hear what the sentiments and needs are, because our business owners are tired. Our business owners don't have the energy to come to these meetings and speak time and time again, but those that represent the businesses from the chamber and from the downtown partnership have, and I have not heard back from you guys. Councilmember Van, Councilmember Rivera, thank you for reaching out. The rest, I, I haven't heard from. Councilmember Alberston, let me take that back. You spoke to me before you were a council member, so thank you there as well. The civic core plan identifies sustain, activate, and create, and respectfully, we are painfully skipping over the critical step one of sustaining. You were asked to look into the matter of construction impact grant funding, and in speaking to some of those businesses who were denied that grant funding, not only are they crushed with the denial, but they were devastated at the lack of perceived support from you all. Like National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation, two days prior to the holidays, they received a denial to the grant that had been spoken of as an easy click-and-apply for businesses impacted by the COVID-related construction delay, delays. We now pose a risk, if, we pose risk to lose a few of our businesses who were denied funding and have lost all faith in the city of Renton. One business was, that promised not to lay off any employees sacrificed her own pay, her own down payment for her home in order to make her payroll, and now is watching as her employees start to walk away as she can no longer afford them. These are businesses that we run the risk of losing here in the city. And I'm asking you as council members to reach out, to have the conversation, to be that same champion that I was for the city of Renton, even when it wasn't the popular thing to do, to say, hey, hang in there. Together, we're stronger. We're gonna get through this. And how can I help you as a council member? You have businesses in the downtown core that need to hear from you, and I am asking, if you aren't going to listen to me, to reach out to those businesses yourself and have those conversations. Thank you very much.
That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. There's eight items. Are there any that council would like to hold for separate consideration?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda as published.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurven and seconded by Councilmember Prince that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Next up, we have unfinished business. Council President McGurven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gotta get you used to going first, and thankfully, I've resolved my microphone issues. Sorry about that during roll call. Um, so the committee of the whole has two committee reports to present.
Hey, the first report is regarding equity housing and human services departments' proposed use of the 2022 American Recovery Plan Act ARPA funds allocation. The committee of the whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the allocation of the Equity Housing and Human Services Department's American Recovery Plan Act ARPA funds allocation plan as outlined below. Uh, reach, uh, funds already expended for emergency needs at their current location, $115,000. Reach, annual cost for 2021 to provide homeless services to Renton, $60,000. Equity and community needs assessment and human services plan implementation, $775,000. Uh, Village of Hope Redmond Model Case Management and Distribution of Human Services Contract, $99,000. Expansion of Human Services Agencies, $192,140. Immediate funding to agencies serving those in dire need for COVID-related expenses, $55,000. Smaller agencies serving Renton residents not funded by human services, right? This is $52,000. Equity and Inclusion Program Consultant Agreement, $100,000. And increase a staff from half-time Admin Secretary 1 Grade A 9 Step C to full-time Administrative Secretary 1 Grade A 9 Step C. Uh, the total estimated allocation is $1.5 million.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Gorman.
Gorman.
Oh, jeez. Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurbin, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. I apologize once again.
Okay, the next report from the Committee of the Whole is regarding the Development Agreement for Health Through Housing with King County that we discussed earlier in the meeting. The Committee of the Whole recommends staff prepare a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a development agreement with King County Department of Community and Human Services, DCHS, for the proposed permanent supportive housing development project with onsite services for the chronically homeless on Oakdale, LU A twenty-one dash zero 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 three eight nine. The City Council has final reviewing authority over development agreements, RCW thirty-six seventy B one seventy. As proposed, the development agreement is consistent with applicable development regulations of the Rent Municipal Code. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption at its regular council meeting on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President McGurbin.
I move the council concur with the committee of the whole report.
Mm-hmm. Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurbin, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the committee of the whole committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. And Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has five reports this evening.
Okay, the first Finance Committee report is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Council payable total payment of twenty-one million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty cents for a number of vouchers, payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and six wire transfers. Payroll, a total payment of three million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and fourteen cents for payroll vouchers, including one thousand, one hundred and eighty-two direct deposits and thirteen checks. This is for the November sixteenth through thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the December first through December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one pay periods. Kidder Matthews vouchers totaling thirty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-three cents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberston.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Report.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding a grant extension for Best Starts for Kids Out of School Time, two thousand and twenty-two. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant extension agreement with Schools Out Washington in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, two dollars and fifty cents, subject to approval as informed by the city attorney department, and allocate the funds to the Recreation Division to utilize fifty-seven thousand, twelve dollars of the grant award to the term-limited position zero two four eight six dash zero zero two, to increase it from three-quarter full-time equivalent to a one full-time equivalent, starting January first, two thousand and twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding hiring a lead golf course maintenance worker at Step D of the salary scale. So the Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize staff to compensate the selected lead golf course maintenance worker candidate as Step D of salary grade A sixteen, effective January third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding Cascade Park Playground Equipment Replacement Contract. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the construction contract with Northwest Playground Equipment Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-six cents for the Cascade Park Playground Equipment Replacement Project. The project has been budgeted for three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars in the project account. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Report.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the final Finance Committee report is regarding converting a transportation-planning civil engineer three from half-time to full-time position. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the conversion of the existing half-full-time equivalent civil engineer three position number zero two four seven five slash zero zero nine to a one point oh FTE, full-time equivalent civil engineer three position in the Public Works Department.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with this Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Alberston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee has one committee report to present.
All right, the Utilities Committee Committee Report regarding two thousand and twenty-two solid waste utility revenue and fund requirements. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation, excuse me, to approve the solid waste utility revenue requirements as follows. Increase fund revenue for the solid waste utility by five percent for single-family residential and commercial rolloff effective April first, two thousand and twenty-two. Increase fund revenue for the solid waste utility by four percent for the solid waste utility commercial multifamily effective April first, two thousand and twenty-two. Achieve annual commercial revenue support for single-family residential of five hundred thousand dollars by two thousand and twenty-six, and achieve and maintain a fund balance reserve of two million dollars by two thousand and twenty-six. In addition, the Utilities Committee directs staff to prepare the ordinance, allowing the city to charge the two thousand and twenty-two solid waste rates beginning April first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberston.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, seconded by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, next up is Councilmember Van.
But no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have legislation, and we have one ordinance for first reading.
Okay, this ordinance is regarding the two thousand and twenty-two solid waste rates as we spoke about just now. An ordinance of the city of Ritten, Washington, amending section eight, one ten of the Rent Municipal Code, establishing the solid waste collection services rate starting April first, two thousand and twenty-two, for all customer classes, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date. And this was for first reading, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Alberston.
I move this ordinance to be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, seconded by Councilmember Rivera, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. We're on to new business. Council President McGurbin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have some meetings to announce. Before I do, I want to bring in one item that was kind of a holdover I meant to share during Committee of the Whole, which is regarding the two thousand and twenty-two legislative session, which began today. It was the reason I was late to Cal earlier. I just wanted to solicit perhaps council's feedback, maybe not right now, but at least throw the idea out there of our legislative day in Olympia to be determined later and how we want to do that, given that the session is virtual. So I want members to be thinking about how we would approach that and supporting our advocacy efforts in Olympia before we get too far in the session, given that it just got underway today, and we have some pretty important priorities. So did want to share that. And then I do want to announce our upcoming meetings as well, starting with Monday, January seventeenth. There will be no meetings in celebration of the Martin Luther King Junior holiday. Then on Monday, January twenty-fourth, Committee of the Whole will be meeting at six p.m. via video conference. There's one item on the agenda, which is CED two thousand and twenty-one year-end review. And then following that will be our regular council meeting at seven p.m. via video conference. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, January the twenty-fourth at four p.m., the Finance Committee will be meeting via video conference. We have eight items on the agenda. Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant with the Washington State Department of Commerce, Ritten Trail Connector Grant with Washington State Department of Commerce, the Main Street Ritten Doing Business as Ritten Downtown Partnership Contract, Therapeutic Grant Acceptance and Approval, the Family First Community Center Contract Award, Highlands to Ritten, excuse me, Highlands to Landing Pedestrian Lighting Phase Two Project Contract Award, Vouchers, and finally Emerging Issues in Finance. And that is all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
The Community Services Committee believes it's meeting next month, so no upcoming meetings this month. I may be -- I cannot see my agenda right now, but I may be incorrect. I don't believe we have any new businesses, and Jason or Jason is confirming that, so thank you, Jason.
Okay, no new business. All right, Councilmember Alberston.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No new business, but I do want to thank staff for bringing up the agenda as far as the Health Through Housing Initiative in two weeks, and hopefully during the time we'll be able to listen to community, but I appreciate the staff presentation today. So thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No new business.
All right. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, at five p.m., the Planning Development Committee will be meeting via video conference. We have three items on the agenda, document sixteen of the two thousand and twenty-two work program and emerging issues in CED. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Council President McGurbin, that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody want to stay? Say nay. Okay, thank you all. We are adjourned.